Okay, perfect. We'll get started here. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for September 19th, 2024. Mayor Giles is out of town in an excuse. All other council members are present. First item is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, September 23rd council meeting. Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Summers? Do you want to see one of these items? I'm not even gonna look for it now. We're extending an intergovernmental agreement with the Queen Creek School District. Is PD here by any chance?
Well, let me, yeah, we can come and Jan. This is essentially the same agreement we have with Mesa Public Schools.
Just real quick overview, so folks know.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Summers. Thank you for this opportunity. Basically, this is, like the city manager said, the same agreement that we have with Mesa City Schools. Basically, what we are going to do is we have one Queen Creek School in Mesa. The difference with our Queen Creek IDA versus our Gilbert IDA is Gilbert only gave us access to the three schools that are in Mesa, but Queen Creek is giving us access to all schools that have cameras. Now, the important thing to keep in mind about this camera connection is we will only feed into it when there is an incident that occurs on school grounds or near school grounds. So it's not a surveillance capability for law enforcement. It's surveillance for the public school system.
And that's the same agreement we have with Gilbert, except you're getting more schools for this?
Correct, Gilbert and Mesa. It's the same for Mesa as well. We only tap into the Mesa cameras for incidents that are occurring.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to highlight this because there's been question about the safety in schools. We've seen this nationally, not just here. There's been some violent incidents with mostly teen violence. So this is an opportunity to make sure that that doesn't get under control. It's the safety of the children, it's the safety of the officers. I think it leads to a faster response. What I'm happy to see is this is now extending not only to Mesa and Gilbert, but now into Eastmark School.
It will be the Eastmark School, yes.
Which is Queen Creek, as we tend to forget that. Even though the school districts are Mesa, Gilbert, Queen Creek, they are not in line with the towns or cities of Mesa, Gilbert, Queen Creek. So this now has coverage over the entire city, and I appreciate you working on that.
Yes, sir, and this is a result of the Juvenile Violent Crime Committee that we have created at the Police Department. We're collaborating with many different areas, including probation, Superior Court for the juvenile courts, as well as all of our schools' representatives. And so this came out of that collaboration, and Queen Creek is very excited to engage with us in this opportunity.
There's a little sliver of Higley School District in District Six. Is there a Higley School? I'm not aware of a Higley School.
There is a Higley Unified School District. We have not engaged in conversation with them, but I will check back with the commander over the school resource officers, and she's also over the Real-Time Crime Center, to see if we've had any discussion.
Okay, fantastic. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to, 4H, it looks like we're gonna, if fire could come up and talk about a tiller apparatus that we're considering purchasing. I know in my prior experience, we haven't had a tiller truck in probably 30 years for the city of Mesa, and so I'm thinking, I mean, these are awesome apparatus, and maybe you can give us an overview. Hi, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, Assistant Chief Jamie Johnson, and Fire Administrator Jason Nicholson here for all the technical questions that may come. Yes, we haven't had a tiller for a while, but as we know, the dense population that we have in the city here, the mid-rises, the light rail, the difficult access we have. Our trucks do get in there, our ladder trucks, but it's, you know, they're turning three times to get in there type thing. So this is a much more maneuverable apparatus that is more functional to get into those tight spaces is the, one of the biggest things, concerns that we have. So it will allow for that. It's got a lot more storage on it so that we're able to carry more equipment, the ladders and stuff like that. So it, we feel it just will be much more functional.
Is it a taller ladder height than what we've previously had? What's our height thought compared to our other ladder trucks?
No, sir, they're at 11 foot 10, which is comparable to our current mid-mount ladders that were, we run four of in our city right now.
So they don't have any pump capacity in them? They're just a dry truck?
No, sir, they do. This one is wet.
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's one of the reasons when we went away from them way back when is because they didn't offer the pumps. But yes, this one has a pump, so it's fully functional and can go on any call.
So it's able to carry water as well?
Yes, sir.
200, 300?
300 gallons, sir.
300 gallons? No, I just think this is ironic that we're circling back to a tiller truck today when we haven't had one, but it showed that we've progressed, especially in downtown area and tight areas. They are more maneuverable. And having driven one, I do know they're, they're technical too, so not, they're not conducive to everybody driving one, right, Mr. Summers?
No, I was gonna ask a follow-up.
Go ahead.
I don't want to step on you.
No, go ahead.
I'm done. How much of the, I guess my concern would be this is a singular piece of equipment, so the familiarity will be less for those who are driving and commanding these things. As a unique piece of apparatus, from a maintenance standpoint, are the parts in the pump, the ladder, the motors and all that, are they similar to what's on the straight sticks, the regular apparatus?
Yes, sir, so we would, we can get the same specification that we currently run when it comes to pumps and chassis stuff and the aerial device and all that.
So it will be able to warehouse equipment for, and that universal to other equipment?
Yes, sir.
Sometimes you see that in other cities where they buy a unique piece of apparatus, and it's the only thing, and you have to order that specific part. So that's good. And I assume you're putting together a training program for driving these things?
Yes, sir, that will definitely be.
Do you want us to come out and show you how to do that?
We will encourage that, for sure.
Engineer's promotional test, I had to drive the tiller front and back. Back it up, forward, through it. I only hit one cone, just one.
Well, if you're on the back end, you have to steer opposite of the front end, so that's very important. So why we got Pierce Manufacturing versus E1? Did, was this low bid? Or we, we kind of steered away from Pierce, but now we're E1 and then?
So, go ahead.
So we did, sir, no, we did actually contact the other manufacturers in regards to the tiller and locking that tiller out, right? So they can be driven by just one person. And Pierce currently is offering the best option there on being able to lock that out. The other manufacturers would almost require an un-call mechanic to come out to lock that tiller out to be able to be driven by one person. On the Pierce product, it's basically pneumatic and a push of a button. It will lock that tiller out, and it can be driven back by one person.
So how long will it take to get one?
Four years, sir.
Four years, wow, okay. All right, thank you for the overview. I just thought that was interesting that we're reverting back to tillers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, Councilmember Summers, then Councilmember Spelsbury?
I was just curious, on the 7A and B, the amendments to the zoning ordinance for the ADUs, is anything different from?
I think, Rachel, were you prepared to, you have a present? We have a little presentation.
It's just been a while since we had that.
Yeah, no, so we bring that up to date. Yep, we can do that.
Well, while she's setting it up, I have a very quick question for Mr. Brady on 6A, which is, and I like this. Delegation of authority for approval or denial of liquor licenses on special events, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's limited to the special events. I've been hoping to streamline this process a little bit because most, you know, unless there's an issue with the liquor license, trying to, you know, go through this whole burdensome process, and then ultimately it's approved by the Liquor Board anyway. So having the city manager do this, especially on the special events, I think it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
All right, so, good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. So Rachel Nettles, I'm the Assistant Planning Director, and with me today I have Sean Pesek. He is a senior planner with our Long Range Planning Group. But on Monday's agenda, we are introducing some tax amendments related to accessory dwelling units. And we started having this conversation with City Council back in November of last year. Despite the fact that we've allowed ADUs within the city for a very long time, we still wanted to look at ways that we might be able to reduce the barriers to constructing ADUs. And so as staff, we had prepared some, some concepts for tax amendments, and we had went out and conducted some public outreach. So within the spring of this last year, we had three meetings. One of those was a virtual public meeting, and we had two in-person public meetings where we receive feedback from the public. But at the same time, as you may know, the state was considering changes requiring ADUs to be mandated by all the municipalities. And in May of this last year, the governor signed that bill. So that became in effect within this last weekend, I believe, and it requires municipalities to, to make amendments to their zoning ordinance to allow for ADUs under certain conditions. And I just want to go through what those are because that does affect what we had talked about previously and what you'll see in these tax amendments. So there are certain things that we are required to, to include within the zoning ordinance as far as ADUs. And one of those has to do with the number of ADUs that's allowed on a property. So per HB 2720, they, we must allow one attached and one detached ADU on all properties where a single-family dwelling is allowed. But then also, if a property is one acre or more in size, and if at least one of those ADUs is restricted for affordable housing, we have to allow a third ADU on the property. They also set limits on how we can regulate the ADU so we cannot enforce certain aesthetic requirements for them. So we cannot require them to match the exterior design, roof pitch, or finishing materials of the actual primary residence. And we don't, we cannot set restrictions on the ADUs that are more restrictive than single-family dwellings as far as heights, setbacks, lot size, lot coverage, or building frontage. In addition, for the rear and side setbacks, they stated that they cannot be greater than five feet. And they established a size limit on them as well, so they are permitted to be 75% of the primary dwelling's gross floor area, up to 1,000 square feet. In addition, we also cannot require additional parking for the ADU. So with that, I'll quickly go over some of the main points in the tax amendment, and you'll see a lot of these are reflected from the, from the bill there. So the first one is that we're amending the permitted zoning districts in which they're allowed. So we need to also allow them in our RM5 district, our residential small lot districts, and on any parcel that contains an existing single residence. For the permitted number, this reflects what is in the bill. They would be allowed to have, we currently allow one ADU per lot, but because of the state requirements, we'd be allowed to have one attached and one detached per lot or port parcel. And then on those parcels that are larger than one acre, if one of those is reserved for affordable housing, we would have to allow for a third one. For the size of the ADUs, currently, our regulations say that they can be 30% of the primary dwelling's square, gross, square, gross floor area. So the amendments change that to 75% of the dwelling, not to exceed 1,000 square feet. For the heights, currently, it's based on our detached accessory structure regulations, and those really vary depending on the location where they're located in the backyard. So that's going to be switched to have a maximum building height for whatever the requirement is for the underlying zoning district. For setbacks, once again, our current standards base the setbacks on the size and the height of an accessory structure within the backyard. So these amendments would change those to be a minimum of a five-foot rear and interior side setback. Your front setbacks and your side street setbacks would follow your underlying zoning district. In addition, we also are amending the ADU section to allow for non-conforming structures that do not meet current setbacks to be converted into an ADU without having to go through the special use permit process to, to do so or to expand that structure. So that's one of the additional kind of modifications that we had discussed with council previously that we're including in these tax amendments. So in addition to the ADU tax amendments, there are a couple of other topics that are included in some ordinances on Monday. And I wanted to first touch on the detached accessory structures because in those previous slides, I had mentioned that currently our ADUs follow the requirements for detached accessory structures. We have found that those are very confusing for the public and staff to enforce because currently there are about seven different scenarios that you can build a detached structure in your backyard, and it really depends on the height, the location, the size of those. So we really wanted to simplify that section for the public. So instead, we've created kind of two buckets of categories. The, the first one is that if you have a structure that's less than or equal to 200 square feet, and it's less than or equal to eight feet in height, you can encroach into your rear and side setbacks. So there would be no setback there. You just would not be able to be in any sort of easement, and you could not shed any sort of water onto your neighbor's property. The second bucket is if you are greater than 200 square feet, and you're kind of in this midpoint between eight feet and 15 feet in height, you could be within your side and rear yards up to five feet. And if you're, have a structure that's taller than 15 feet in height, you cannot exceed the, the height of the underlying zoning district or the height of the primary building. So we really wanted to make sure that these are subordinate to the main structure so that you wouldn't have a single-story home and a two-story detached structure in your backyard. And as far as the setbacks, at that point, if it's greater than 15 feet in height, it would have to adhere to the setbacks of the underlying zoning district, so it would have the same building envelope as the home would. And then the other amendment that we wanted to touch on today has to do with our public safety facilities and where they're allowed within the city. So currently, they are not permitted within our residential districts. And, and this is a little odd because within our general plan, we really state that one of the purposes of the residential districts is to have compatible public and semi-public uses. So with that, we are proposing to amend the land use table to allow public safety facilities within our single residence, our small lot residence, and our multiple resident zoning districts, with the caveat that those would be city-owned and operated facilities. And that is the conclusion. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any one of those tax amendments.
I have a question back on, you're, two slides ago, I think it is, the simplify setback and height requirement. So the third bullet, if it's greater than 200 square feet and, and higher than 15 feet, I thought we still can't enforce greater than five-foot setbacks, but you're saying on this last bullet, you can, we can require them to comply with the zoning requirement?
So, so the, the greater than the five-foot setback, that is specific to accessory dwelling units. This section is just for detached accessory structures. So these would be like your detached garages or a shed in your backyard. So we can regulate these. It is specifically the ADUs that that state bill speaks to.
Oh, okay. Wonder if we can, okay, that's a little confusing. Detached accessory and accessory dwelling unit, I don't know if we can. Is this, is this a legal term that we have to use, detached accessory? Is there some way we can make it a little bit?
It is a term that's currently used. I don't believe there's any legal background in it, but.
Anyway, think about it. It seems a little confusing, but thank you.
Councilmember Spelsbury?
Go ahead.
Such gentlemen. Okay, so the, am I understanding then that no ADU can be over 1,000 square feet?
Councilmember Spelsbury, that's correct.
Okay, any that currently are would just be grandfathered? Or, or we don't think there are any, or, I mean, I know of some?
Yes, that's correct. They would be grandfathered if we do have any.
Okay, and so then on the slide seven, that says that the third one could be permitted, they can't like combine ADUs two to make them bigger than 1,000 square feet or something? Do you know what I mean? Like they have to all be separate buildings?
That's correct. They would have to be separate structures.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Rachel. You know, when we talk about the 200 square feet on the no minimum setbacks, I can see neighbors complaining to neighbors about having to, well, you're putting a building right against the property line, the, the rear and side yard setbacks. And I could just see friction coming with that, even though it's going to be permitted to do that. The, the other thing I was thinking about is the permitting process for this? Is it going to be simple for someone to submit a permit for this? Because are we going to streamline that process as well? In the permitting process, to make it easier for people to do ADUs?
Yeah, Councilmember Freeman, so currently ADUs just go through permitting. They don't have to go through planning for any additional entitlements. So it is a fairly quick process to construct an ADU as far as this permitting.
Okay.
Well, I remember when we were, had, when we had this presentation before, we were talking about making some blueprints or something? Am I using the right word? Like we had talked about, like, you, here's four options, and you could like pick, like you could do this one. Am I pre-approved plans? Do we, do you remember this? Anyways, are we still planning on doing that? Or have so many things been preempted that we can't even do something like that anymore?
Vice Mayor Brady, Councilmembers. So I do remember the discussion as, as a possibility, but I, I do not believe that we really received direction to move forward with that. But if, I think that's something that we could look into in the future if that.
Was that brought up with, like, when we had community meetings or input on this? Was that part of it brought up? I loved that idea. I thought that made a lot of sense to like come to the city and say, oh, I want Plan C, or whatever. You know, I, I thought that would make it way easier for people to be able to do this.
Yeah, Councilmember Spelsbury, that was not one of the topics that was discussed with the public.
Okay. Okay, I liked the idea.
I think we should, I'm sorry, I'm jumping right in. Not even. Because I, I believe in doing this, that we have maybe just a few, maybe three or something, whatever makes sense to fit general sizes that have a good layout, and they can just pop out. Because getting someone to do your plans for that small of, it, it's extremely difficult, let alone the expense. So I think it would be more streamlined for people. If they wanted to go that route, of course, they could design their own to say, look, this 600-foot Plan C would look, fit wonderfully in my backyard, and that's where I want to go. And I know when I permit for it, it's going to be an easy, given that I'm meeting my setbacks and it's within everything like that. It's straightforward, and I can start. And can we do the prefab or, I don't want to say container homes, but you know, those type of, like the Zeni Home models? Can the, are those allowed in as an ADU?
So Councilmember Deff, currently, that would not be permitted within this tax amendment, but once again, if the council was interested in looking at pre-approved plans and allowing for different types of construction, we could, we could look into that.
Yeah, I think we need to bring the building official to have that conversation. I think asking Rachel that puts her in a position where she has to speak for the building. I think if we want to have that discussion about pre-approved plans, about other options, prefabs, we probably ought to have John Sheffer come and have that conversation. Well, I know, but I think we needed to.
I feel like we had that conversation.
Yeah, I don't think we felt like we had full direction from the council or just delegate use. But my point is, I'm not saying no, I just like, let's get him here so we can have the conversation with him, and he can give you some thoughts about what those parameters would look like.
It's been a kind of a confusing road just because we started doing our plan, and then the state came in, we're thinking, and then we had to pull back, and then we had to proceed and revise to the state. So it's been, feels like a long journey in trying to get to this point. But I, I like the ordinance that you've suggested, and I agree to that. As a next step, I would like to see some pre-approved plan selections, just a few basic ones, and like three different, or whatever. You guys know more about this than I do, but as far as shapes, you know, more square or rectangle, so it fits different backyards. And I think it'd be very strong to encourage people to consider an ADU in order to help with their family as well as our affordable housing issues. Thank you.
Your counsel, I just wanted to, on the pre-approved plans, that conversation happened as part of the balanced housing plan discussion, and that is one of the action items that Development Services is looking into. So we'll come back as we continue to evaluate that recommendation.
Not part of the, it wasn't part of the ADU.
I remember talking about it when we had the ADU conversation.
Yeah, and I think the conversation on prefab, pre-constructed buildings should be part of it too. Because, not to promote the Zeni Home, but there's other options out there that people can get a prefab building and, and just do your foundational work and set it on there. That should be something that consider because those are really fast and streamlined. If you don't want to be in the construction business, you know, you could order one up, and maybe four years later, it'll show up.
Yeah, Councilmember Spelsbury?
So I, I don't need like a complete list, but were there a lot of things that we had initially proposed that got preempted? Like, did we have a parking requirement, for example? Or were we going to ask for parking?
Councilmember Spelsbury, no, we weren't going to require any additional parking. We were going to limit the accessory dwelling units to be no taller than the primary structure, similar to what we're proposing for the detached accessory structures so that they would be more subordinate. We were also looking at different setbacks for, for the interior and side setbacks.
So nothing major, really? Or was there, was the 30% to the 75% that seems like a big one?
Councilmember Spelsbury, we were proposing something in line with that already, yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to remember all the things.
I think there was some design constraints, you know, that it was in similar architecture of the house. I don't know, there's a, whatever term, the main house. And I think now, you know, that has gone away as far as the difference of where we started and where we are.
That's correct. So yeah, we were going to require some compatibility with the primary structure. And the other big difference is the number of ADUs permitted on lot. We were proposing just one, and, and the bill affected that.
Councilmember Freeman?
So let's switch over to the public safety tax amendment facilities. Kind of give us an example of what might be permitted to be in that type of parcel or zoning RS, RSL, and RM?
So this specifically is, would be allowed for a fire and medical facility. So we've had a couple of projects recently where they've had to rezone to a different district. And so this, it just made sense. It didn't really make sense that they were restricted in the first place, so it's a little bit of a cleanup item.
We just brought one forward, correct? Yeah, the one at Lehigh, the one on Lehigh. We had to do a rezoning for that.
So will that help maybe with some of our gap coverage in the future? If we need to, or just helps?
It just doesn't mean we have to go through the whole zoning process for a fire station. I mean, it doesn't stop us from where we're putting fire stations because that's driven by data and what our responses are. But instead of having to go through a public process, a public facility, a public, the planning process to, you know, make sure that that use can fit inside a residential area, which is contrary to, because that's where you want your fire stations, is near residential areas to serve them. So it's just kind of acknowledging sometimes that comes in conflict with our locations.
What would be a quasi-public use? That was part of the language in here, I see.
So the semi-public use might be like a, it's a privately owned, like a club or fraternal organization, but this specifically is just for public safety facilities. It, it's not extending this to be all semi-public uses.
I just wanted to see how it would be interpreted in the future, so. And, and good, no, I like that because a lot of our fire stations are built in neighborhoods and not necessarily on street corners, but. All right, thank you.
So this wouldn't include like a rec center?
No, Councilmember Goport, this is just specifically for public safety.
Because that would have more, yeah, we'd want to have those conversations because it's going to have more outdoor, possibly more outdoor use, and parking would be an issue.
So what, why do we have quasi-public in here? Give us an example. What is a quasi-public, public safety facility?
That refers to, in the general plan, when we talk about uses, there's kind of categories of uses, and one of those. categories of uses. And one of those is, in general, public or quasi-public uses. And that includes a number of things, like we're talking about, the public safety facilities. It could be libraries, it could be, you know, recreational centers. It's just an overarching kind of bucket where those specific uses fall. But within the general plan, when it speaks to it, it speaks to that general, that we find that neighborhoods, you know, it's compatible to have these quasi-public uses within neighborhoods, to kind of support the fabric and the cohesiveness.
Okay. So it could include all those things? We're saying in this instance, that's not what we're doing it for, but the language says it can include that.
The language in the general plan, yes. And in some instances, a lot of these uses are already permitted within, within residential districts. But in, for public safety facilities, it was not.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Summers? I'm curious. Help me visualize what this looks like a bit, because I can think of some fire stations, like the one under construction in District Five, there's residential behind that. Yours, I think, is attached to residential. But I grew up back east, and when I think of, in a residential district, I think driving down a residential street, house, 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 fire station, house, 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 right? Because it was built back in the old horse and buggy days. So that's really integrated into a residential neighborhood. There's been fire stations, was it Old Two here that was in a residential neighborhood that moved? I think it's over off of Stapley somewhere.
Second Avenue.
Second Avenue. That was really in a residential neighborhood, houses right next door to it. Station 14 in Phoenix is still in that, with houses right next door to it. So that's, there's a kind of a difference between adjacent to or kind of connected to a residential neighborhood, and really integrated into the neighborhood. So what would this allow us to do? Does it just next door to some area that's residential, or is it really integrated into a residential neighborhood that would be allowed?
Councilmember Summers, it would allow for the construction of a public safety facility on a property that has residential zoning. So that could be any number of scenarios.
So theoretically, it could be, like, back east. Realistically, probably not.
Yeah, because, again, what's driving, the zoning doesn't drive the location for a fire station, our metrics do. We look at the response times, we look at the distance between stations, we look at the area that needs to be served and what's happening. And then we have to go by the property. And one of the reasons some of these properties don't work that are, were previously built inside of residential, they're just not big enough anymore. They just don't meet the, the old 203 that was, you know, it was just too small with, now we're buying tiller trucks, I mean, you know, we gotta So we, we have a need that is going to, you know, kind of dictates where we're looking for these locations. Most, you know, now going forward for new fire stations, you know, we're trying to get ahead of growth or anticipate, and we're looking for, I don't know, James, is he still here? What is it, four or five acres, I think, typically? Yeah, about that size. So, you know, we've got to have access to, we've got to be able to get that truck, those apparatus out on a street. And we kind of do the whole analysis of how long is it going to take them to get to the area that they serve, making sure that's meeting those needs. So, but a lot of times, because of way properties are zoned, they end up being residential, even though there may not be next door to a, you know, even the one, I think we just did at Lehigh, which has got a treatment plan behind it, and a church to the east of it, it was still a zone residential. So we had to go through that whole process. So I, I think it's, I don't see that it's going to be much of a conflict. I don't think we're going to be infiling fire stations inside of communities. We try to work ahead of that. You know, when we were over at Eastmark, right, we moved the fire station out of that neighborhood, one for size two. It just, you know, we're right in the middle of the neighborhood, and it was going to take too long to get out of that neighborhood to get out and serve the rest of the area. So we moved it further out towards the major materials. So I think it's just more of a convenience of the process that we have to go through when we identify properties.
I think that makes a lot of sense, trying to go back 100 years, and how they did, it was a lot different. And there's, I don't want to see it sandwiched into a neighborhood where there's houses on all sides of this thing, because that's just going to create issues. I don't think that's where this council-
Well, if council would be approving-
Correct. I don't think this council, or any future council, or yourself, or the fire chief would be pushing in that direction. I just, that this is just a zoning component to it, and not trying to integrate it into fire stations, because it's, it's not compatible, really, with fire state, fire trucks right next to a house with a family, and it's not a good idea. So I just don't want us going down that direction. Just a quick question on this. So all these, the new rules, one of the things that, when I'm following this whole 270, or 2720, excuse me, was that Mesa is really on the forefront of ADUs. I mean, I remember being part of that conversation a decade or so ago, about how we can expand housing options in the city. And we had one of the more permissive ADU policies, you know, really stood out among all the cities. So how successful was that? And how many, do we see a lot of ADUs? Do we anticipate a lot more of these permits being issued based on the changes in 2720?
So Vice Mayor, councilmembers. So when we had this conversation, there was kind of this acknowledgement that even though we do have a really good ordinance that has a lot of great provisions in it, we still don't see the use of them as much as we would hope to. So we know with our public feedback and kind of discussions that we've been having with stakeholders, we have a lot of citizens that were part of those public meetings that have been keeping track of this and contacting staff to discuss the House bill that got passed. And they're, they're very anxious to be able to use those new standards, and are just kind of waiting for it to go into effect.
Okay, so we might see a little
So we might see-
A few new ones, and then taper off, and hopefully be, and maybe the suggestion about having the templates, maybe is the word we could use, could facilitate that and move that through the process, make it easier on staff as well. There was a, there's a quote here, I think it was on Slide Two, you don't have to pull it up. It says, allows a third ADU on a parcel that is one acre or more in size. And if at least one ADU on the lot or parcels are restricted affordable dwelling unit, what is the definition of a restricted affordable dwelling unit? And is there a timeframe on that?
Councilmember Summers, so the state did define that it would be 80% of the AMI for, for the region, for the kind of statistical area. And the time limit, it did not state that there's a time limit, but within our ordinance, we would require them to either have a deed restriction or to enter into a development agreement with the city to ensure
Okay. And then, so does that make the city, then, the enforcement arm for that particular? Who's going to make sure that somebody in there is at the 80% of AMI?
Councilmembers, I don't think that we are anticipating enforcing that, but when it comes to the construction of it and the eligibility to be able to do it, that is why we would require the deed restriction or something to prove that they intend to use it for that purpose.
Yeah, okay. So it's, because it's kind of reading like, unenforceable restriction. Because, I mean, to try to get in there and say, how much money do you make? I don't want to do that. That's none of my business. So that's, that's an interesting-
Yeah, but we do that on all properties that we fund with HUD dollars. That's a restriction that we have.
Who enforces it?
We do.
We do? Okay. But it's under HUD. So now we'd have to enforce this.
Right. But you just require reporting, and you require them to disclose that they're compliant with the restrictions. I mean, it's not, I'm not saying it's perfect. It's probably not something we really want to get into, but we require restrictions on low-income affordable housing every time we fund something with HUD dollars or home dollars.
Yeah. It's, I think the awkward piece for me is that that's, you know, when we're dealing with an entity that-
You have a nonprofit that's enforcing-
Exactly, yeah. As, to reiterate what he said, is that we're dealing with a nonprofit or an owner of a, a commercial property owner, right? Let's call it that, for building apartments. Whereas now we're dealing with a single family, you know, I build it on my property, and now we're going to enforce it for individual property owners, seems a little, I don't know, precarious, undesirable. I would prefer not to be in that. I'm just kind of identifying some of the concerns, but I guess we don't really have a choice in that.
No.
One other thing. So this is, this is the enforcement from a city perspective, but homeowners associations, there's a lot of them, particularly in my district. So what's enforceable for HOAs?
Councilmember Summers, so if an HOA did restrict ADUs, that would still supersede code. And I don't know from the state aspect of it, maybe Jim could speak to that, if they still supersede state law.
I don't think they preempted the HOAs, and certainly if they even attempted it to be forward-looking on future HOAs. And so if your HOA prohibits it, your HOA may enforce it. The city doesn't, the city doesn't, doesn't get involved in that process. It's a completely separate process.
So I would assume it would be the same, then, for, like, design, because this says it doesn't have to match the house. But if the HOA does allow it, they can put restrictions on, hey, you got to have.
Correct.
So I've lived in two neighborhoods in Mesa, and they've, they've had those types of laws. One allowed something like this, but if it, accessory use, even a shed, would stick up above, then it had to be stucco painted same color and include the same type of roofing material. I assume this would be the same thing. But, you know, Eastmark actually does have ADUs. My neighbor has one. It's, it's an attached ADU, and he uses, it's a multi-generational family. So his mother lives in it at least part-time. And it's, you know, it could, it could have been a garage, the one bay garage, or it could be an accessory dwelling unit, and that's what they built it out as. And it's actually really cool. I kind of wish I had one. But I don't need it. So it's, it's, but it's great to have either that multi-generational family working there, or, you know, maybe they can use it for a little bit of income, too, if they had to, or the son dropping in all of a sudden. So it's, I've always supported this. I'm a little wary of the enforcement of low-income standards. I think we're going to have a problem with that. Parking's going to be interesting, but parking's always seems to be a problem. So it's something we just have to deal with it as it comes through. So thank you for the presentation.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
No? Okay. All right, we'll move on. Another item on the, on the agenda?
Councilmember Gofford?
Go ahead, Jen. No, no, I just want to say in summary here, that I, I'm more optimistic that this is going to be used. There's a lot of discussion about it, especially in the light of affordable housing is being an issue, and how do we do that in a graceful way to integrate into existing properties and infill where we are right now. And this is a way that also helps, you know, people with their families, sometimes they have multiple families living together, to be able to afford today's rents or mortgages, or being able to maybe rent the unit in order to be able to afford to rent the home. So I think the pressures that we had previously, you know, before the pandemic, housing was approachable, attainable. Since then, in the valley and in Arizona and across the nation, it's, all the lack of construction has caught up, and things are extremely expensive, and I think it's a necessary tool. And previously, I know I had residents who wanted to do an ADU, but the 30%, and it wasn't of the square footage of the floor plan, it's the 30% of the roof line, which is kind of confusing. But it really, when you think of an average home, maybe in downtown Mesa, the older neighborhoods might be 1,500 square feet, or, and the roof line, you know, maybe, anyway, it ended up being very restrictive, that they couldn't get enough living space to make it worthwhile. It was very cumbersome, and it would just drop away, just because 30% wasn't enough to really make headway. Or maybe it was 1,000 square foot, 1,200 square foot, and they wanted to, you know, 400 square foot. Anyway, it is, the 30% was an issue to get a reasonable living space. So I'm optimistic, and I hope people talk about it and spread the word, and that we continue to work on these tools, like the templates or whatever, in order to make it feasible. And that we have some community banks, especially, are easier for some financing tools in order to do this in a streamlined manner, to help residents be able to live more affordably and accommodate their family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gofford?
I'll just say real quick, I agree with everything Jen said, and hopefully, it probably was a lot to do with the market, and that, you know, housing was affordable prior to, here in Mesa, prior to 2020. But if there were some barriers to people actually building the ADUs, hopefully, we've gotten rid of those. I think the 75% helps, the parking issue helps. But I hope there were, if there were other things, other feedback you receive from residents on why that it wasn't possible for them to do it before that we've removed some of those barriers, because I think it is beneficial to be able to have this. So my, my question is on, so it's probably for you, Rachel, is on 10, item 10, that annexation? I'm unaware of this. So if you could just give me some background on this?
Councilmember Gofford, so this is an annexation for, it's, a church owns the property, and it's a parking lot right now that they're using, and they want to make improvements to that land. The church property is already annexed into the city. So this is annexing in that parking lot that is just south of them.
Oh, it is, because on the, on the annexation map, it, it's on the north side of Florian, and I thought the parking lot was on the south side of Florian Avenue. Am I not seeing that right?
Let me, I would have to pull up the map. But the parking lot is on the south side of the church property. I'm not familiar.
I might be able to help. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Bill Gofford. Rachel's right. It's, the church itself is in Maricopa County, the parking lot is in the city, and they want to be able to use that parking lot for off-site parking. But to be able to do that, we need to annex the church itself into the city, so that they're both in the same municipality, or the same jurisdiction.
So are they going to have to make any improvements to the, now that they're, you know, under the guidelines of the City of Mesa? And it's residential zoning, right? So how does that work?
That's a good question. So the church itself would not necessarily need to make any improvements, because they're not making any changes to the site. When that parking lot comes in to do off-site parking, they would need to improve that per city standard. So landscaping, asphalt, it would need to look like a real parking lot.
So when you get annexed, you don't have to, you don't have to make any improvements to your existing building when you get to come in compliance with the City of Mesa codes?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Gofford. So there are scenarios where you have to, you might need to make improvements to the roadway and things like that. In this specific area, the roadways are in the county, and we're not annexing the roadway.
But not necessarily to the building itself.
Not, not to the building.
No.
But it'd be like streets.
Usually, usually what happens, it's about getting infrastructure, right?
Right.
It's usually typically infrastructure, and now having to build, bring the roads up to our standards. Those are the typical kind of improvements that we would do.
And there, and the road, the Ellsworth obviously is already in the city, right? The, the road on the east?
I don't believe we have annexed all of Ellsworth.
Oh, okay.
But the church itself sits on Florian. And to answer your question about the building, let's say they wanted to come in and do an addition or anything like that after it's annexed, it would need to meet our standards.
Okay. And then when they do the parking lot, I mean, sidewalks, if there's no sidewalks, they have to do all that?
Landscaping probably is a big one.
Yeah.
And we already service all their utilities, correct? Keeping those in the county? Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions? Councilmember Deff?
Yes, I have one more. On 4G, about the utility locating services, I noticed as we've done the fiber expansion, there's been some mishaps that have occurred in the digging. And I remember a couple of different times talking to service providers, they said, we dug as instructed, per, you know, this mapping. The mapping was wrong, and one of them was a water line.
I don't know that that's accurate 100% of the time.
Okay, so maybe that was just, you know-
That sounds like a good story from a lobbyist, but that's not the story of the product.
Okay, all right. So maybe it's a story, friend, you know.
We're pretty sure, we're pretty sure, but he knew where those-
Okay, so I didn't know if there was accuracy issues, if there's accountability to get off that.
Well, sometimes we get maps from the other utilities, right? And we just have, they just get filed, and that doesn't, you know, does every asphalt 100% accurate? Probably not. But, you know, that's just the nature of how things- Probably not. But, you know, that's just the nature of how things work. So, but anyway, these are services that are not just, I mean, the fiber certainly is part of that, but we use it for a lot of other projects that we do, so.
Yeah, anytime you're digging, you're required to call 811 for Blue Steak Service, and we have folks that will go out there and will mark the utilities. And at the City of Mesa, we're marking all of the utilities and the fiber and streetlights and everything else that's underground that we have here. So it's pretty extensive. Fiber has definitely increased the workload for this group, and that's the main driver behind this council item.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure, there's some kind of, and maybe it's not an issue at all, maybe it's just stories that I've been, you know. I don't know and everything, but I'm just concerned, if this is, you know, a vendor that we use, is there some kind of accountability or, you know, a standard as far as accuracy? Or maybe it's not an issue at all, and it just happens that we have so much digging right now, what affects our residents and what we hear about is like a little bit much.
I would say the vast majority of the time, I don't have the specific numbers on our accuracy, but I can get those. We are marking the utilities correctly.
Okay.
In addition to that, the contractor is supposed to daylight the utility before they, so in other words, sometimes they'll pothole, where you'll see that they'll have a smaller hole to actually put visual that that is where the utility is, whether it's a water line or a gas line, whatever it may be. That's a requirement for them.
If I may, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Duff, so we learn from every single incident, obviously, and make improvements, whether it's our issue or the company's issue. And I think what you said is super important. I mean, this is an unprecedented level of activity that's occurring in Mesa all at the same time. And it's inevitable, and as I talked to other folks across the country frankly, when they're thinking about doing this, I said, "It's inevitable you're gonna run into some of these issues", just because of the sheer scale of this. But we literally, I mean, the teams that we have here, it, we, yeah, fingers are often pointed, and then 98% of the time, we're like, well, actually, you know, what we said was right. So, but we do learn from every single one, and I think each time it gets better. But it's still, there will be another hit at some point before this is done, just because.
Hopefully, they'll maybe do the scope when water lines are involved, so.
If not, we'll just, they'll pay for it and we'll fix it. It's just the inconvenience when that happens.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
All right, Councilmember, go forth.
I have a question. So what year are we in here with the fiber project?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember, go forth. So this is year two.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and.
So these increases, are they because of, are they inflationary increases? Are they just, you know, labor increases? There's just, are they ramping up now that they've been doing this for two years?
So one of them, a lot of this becomes because they're boring through. And when they're boring, we have a bore monitor onsite, who's actually there with them the whole time that they're boring across. And I can give you some numbers. In 2022, we had just over 300,000 linear feet of boring that happened. In 2023, it went up to over 800,000 linear feet of boring. And year-to-date, so this is as of, I believe, August, we're at 526,000.
We don't see that. It's not like that's gonna slow.
Yeah, because you have multiple, multiple companies.
It actually is getting more and more.
It'll probably go significantly higher. I mean, we've got, and it doesn't mean that just because one company gets through the whole city, oh, somebody else may show up. I mean, we've got, how many do you have actively working out there? Four, three?
Well, we have three doing citywide builds right now.
Yeah, so they could come by one day, one group, and then another day, another. We've tried to get them to do joint, not trenching.
Yeah, trenching.
But they're kind of, so, but the good news is, a lot more people in Mesa have access to fiber than they did before. But it's, it's a, I don't know what kind of phase you want to call it, not growing pains, but it's just, this is gonna be difficult for the foreseeable future, I would say.
Yeah. And is it something we kind of anticipated?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, you just knew that when people are gonna be cutting up the streets in the same place where utilities are, you're gonna have those conflicts.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll move on to our study session agenda. Item 2A is a continuation of the presentation for the utility fund forecast. We still have this conversation to go to. We'll have Brian Richel and Scott Boucher and the rest of the team. I think, do we need to finish a water discussion?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do first, and then we'll have Energy reform come up.
Okay, perfect.
All right, good morning, Vice Mayor, Council. So before we turn it over to Energy to get into their recommendations, we had a good discussion last Thursday, pretty extensive discussion. And in that exchange, you asked us to go back and remodel a couple of things. Namely, we wanted to look at our residential customers, especially the low-water-using customers, who are already using as little as they can, and how do we ease the rate pressure on that class of customer? So we did some work on that, and we want to talk about that this morning.
Great. Thank you, Chris, Vice Mayor, Council. We're gonna start with a quick recap of the fixed component of what a water rate is, or what we call our service charge. This monthly charge is based on meter size. So for instance, your typical single-family house will have a 3/4-inch meter. Your typical commercial business will have a 1 1/2-inch meter. These larger meters with their increased flow, associated infrastructure, they're more expensive to maintain. So the larger the meter, the higher the service charge. Now, this fixed charge goes to pay the department's fixed costs. This includes such items as, say, personnel or debt service. It should also be noted, though, that our service charge includes 3,000 gallons of water for our customer monthly. We were tasked to take a look at our proposed service charge adjustment and bring it down for our residential customers, and that's what we've done. So adjusting the service charge down from 5 1/2% to 4% will save our residential customers almost a half-dollar a month, or 46 cents a month in the fixed component of their water bill. This is especially impactful to our small users, which we'll address on the next slide. Now, to help balance revenue recovery, we've also proposed adjusting the usage charge for our typical residential customers up about 2 cents every 1,000 gallons they use from what we had previously proposed last week. So how does this impact our residential customers? So as shown in this table, this would mean an increase of $1.87 a month to our typical residential customer's monthly water bill from what they pay now, today, 2024. That's down from an increase of $2.28 under last week's proposal. Even better, those small users, or households that use 3,000 gallons or less a month, would see an increase of $1.24 a month compared to what they pay now, 2024, down from an increase of $1.70 a month that was under last week's proposal. So on the commercial side, and again, to help balance out revenue recovery, we have proposed adjusting the usage charge up for our commercial and landscape customers up about 2 cents every 1,000 gallons, and up about 4 cents every 1,000 gallons for our very large commercial customers from what we had previously proposed last week. And finally, a few other proposed rates we'd like to highlight include the upper usage tiers for our residential customers and our non-residential, non-commercial usage rates, such as our hydrant or construction meter customers, all of which would increase 2 to 3 cents per 1,000 gallons over what we had previously proposed last week. And finally, under this latest proposal, we also include about a 1 cent per 1,000 gallon increase over what we had previously proposed last week in the surcharge for our non-residential customers for all water used above the winter water average. And that concludes our adjustments.
So we would just move forward with these adjustments, and kind of, again, dresses the lowest water user, so. Yeah, but one person living in a home that's probably using about 3,000 gallons a month, this would be a reduced amount from what the previous recommendation was going forward. And then it just begins to kind of adjust upwards as you, kind of keeping about the same for, or a little bit less, I guess, for the 6,000. But then after that, if you're, which in our typical residential water user is below that 6,000, 6,000 or less. So on the average homeowner, it wouldn't have impacted then. We've kind of reduced that impact. But then as you go higher up in those tiers, then you see that rate beginning to increase significantly as we begin to address really this idea that those users are consuming a lot of water, most likely anticipate that a lot of that is outside the house. So this is just the modifications based on the feedback we got last night.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you for going back to the drawing board and looking at that. Ironically, in the last few weeks, I've received emails from residents, you know, complaining about their water bill and their wastewater charge, so, you know, all that we can do to help reduce that. Now, for us, do we draw down our reserve fund to help compensate for some of these charges at all?
Well, this, I think.
Use the word subsidize.
Yeah, let's not use that word. So we, when we look at the, what this did to the overall, the schedule we showed you as far as the impact on the fund balance, I don't think it moved it very much at all, but we try to keep it neutral.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we, when we were looking at the revisions for this model, we tried to keep the forecast the same, so the percentages, the fund balance percentages, we tried to keep that around the middle of the 8% in that final year, because that's where it was. So we tried to keep it revenue-neutral. So if we decreased somewhere, we needed to try to increase another rate to try to get that revenue, so we can keep the forecast the same. But to your point, the, for the next couple of fiscal years, we are drawing down on that fund balance because of some of the projects that are moving forward. But after those years, you'll see the net sources and uses. When we come back, we'll show a revised forecast after Energy with all the recommendations. And you'll see in that, that the negative net sources and uses start becoming positive in a couple of years, in the outer two years of the forecast. So once we draw down, we'll then start building back that fund balance.
Takes us about five years to start getting that net positive.
Very good. I just think for those low-usage or K-Gal users, you know, trying to keep their costs lower, because they're the ones that probably have the most pressures on their finances out in our community, and I think that's, you know, honorable that we can do that. And I've explained that obviously there's pressures on the city to deliver the services, our cost of goods, our infrastructure, our utility debt and everything that we have in that arena. So I'm telling, prices will go up. We're kind of trying to keep it as low as possible. And so whether they agree or disagree, that's kind of the conversation we have out there. So thank you. I am supportive of this for now.
Chris, a question on the slide on 5, the residential, small and typical. Do you have the numbers of how much that equates to as far as residential customers or homes? Do we have, I know in the previous years, there's some slides that show the two different tiers and how many of those, how many customers those are affected, right? And so do we have maybe an estimate of how many people are.
Fall into those different.
Fall into those groups?
Sure, Vice Mayor. I know what you're asking. Eric, do you have a feel for how many?
We could get back to you.
Yeah.
I think we'd be kind of.
That's helpful to, like, look at the scale of just how much.
I think the majority will fall in that 6K.
Based on the water sales, we typically, about 57% of our customers land in that tier one.
Tier one.
So it's more than half that it exists in that level.
And then a good chunk probably in that tier two, or?
Right. That would be your next biggest one, and it's a very small.
It gets smaller, smaller.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's a good indicator, because the meat, so 6,000 gallons a month, that's the median. So half does land below that. And the good news, the way the structure of the rates are, that if you're using 3,000 gallons, you don't even pay a usage charge. So even that 6% increase, that doesn't affect the 3,000 gallon a month user. And by lowering the service charge, like we presented this morning, that's gonna put them in a lot better shape.
Yeah. Yeah, if you can have that, just.
Yeah, we can give you the breakdown, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, suppose.
So on that slide right there, is that tier one, tier two?
So this, Vice Mayor, Council, this slide here, that is the typical and small user. So we define the small user as those users who use 3,000 gallons or less.
Slide seven, go to slide seven. Julie breaks down the usage by tier of residential, is that what you're looking for?
Well, I'm aware of that. I just, because we were looking at that other one, it doesn't have the tier designation for what that chart's saying. So I'm just trying to understand where those.
Tier one is the 6K gal, I think.
So the small is tier zero?
Well, it's, they are provided, well, they are provided 3,000 gallons.
They don't pay a usage rate.
Okay. So in my understanding, we're looking at where it says residential typical, that's the tier one.
They fall in tier one, those 4,000 to 6,000 gallons.
I know what you're asking. Can you go back to that slide?
Well, yeah, I mean.
So those are both tier one. We're just distinguishing between 3,000 and then a little higher in tier one up to 6,000, but under 6,000, it's all tier one.
If you pay, if you only use a 3,000 gallons a month, you never go above that. You don't get paid, the only thing you get charged for is the service charge.
Okay, and not the usage. So on slide nine, which we haven't gotten to in the presentation, I don't know if you were going to, I'm assuming this is what goes out to the public?
That's just for you all to see where we just kind of.
So, well, I'm wondering, do you have slide nine on your presentation? Can you flip to that?
That's, that's it.
So isn't this, is this what goes out when the public says our utility rates are going, are changing? Is this what they see?
So Vice Mayor, Councilmember Phil Berry, they will see an extended version of this for the notice of intent. So we're required by state law to show a cash flow, and what we do with that is we show the five-year forecast. So they will see the next five years, but just noting that the, only the current year, the '24, '25 would be the rate adjustments being adopted by Council. The rest is just a forecast.
Okay, since this just gets really complicated and confusing, I'm just trying to think of like, as a resident of Mesa, I'm trying to figure out what's happening to my utility rates, and so what am I seeing from the city that's coming out?
So what we will show, this is just to show a, what was presented last year, what Council adopted in the gray. The middle column is what was presented during the budget timeframe, and then the last column is for the, what is recommended right now. What we will present as part of the notice of intent will show last year's, what is being recommended for adoption, and then future here. So that, what we, when we highlight that column.
They won't see the budget number.
They won't see the budget number.
But they will see the very first thing, residential tier one, which is most people, that it went from three to six.
Well, it was three last year, and now it's gonna be six this year, yeah.
So it's, so what a typical person's gonna say is that my water's doubled from last year.
No, it's only a three, it's a 6% increase.
Double the rate, three to six, whatever, but.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that's what, yeah, you could say it that way, but it says 6% increase.
Okay, and so I don't remember where I just saw it. Maybe, I don't know, maybe it's with all of Gilbert stuff right now. But I did see something that showed like an amount, like what you're talking about, that I do think is also helpful, so that people are like, what's my bill? And what's 3%, and what's 6%, right? Like, I do think it's helpful to see what the typical amount is that someone's paying.
Right, and that's the one we showed earlier.
The $1.24.
No, I'm talking about like what their bill is going to, you know, like not, anyways, what Frankie was saying.
In the other presentation, the original presentation, isn't it? In the presentation we started on last week, the long one? I think there was examples of the average user and what that dollar amount was, right?
Isn't that what?
Not with the increases, but what they're paying.
That's, that's slide five that we have pulled up right now. If, if I could talk through that real quick, it might be helpful. You, you can see here on, on this slide, our proposal that we're bringing you today, the revised service charge at 4% and the usage charge at 6%. So those small users who use 3,000 gallons or less, their effective increase is only going to be 4% because they're not going to hit that six, they're not going to have a usage charge.
So it's the 32.17, that's their bill amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the 1.24 is just what the increase-
Yes, ma'am.
-is showing. Okay. All right.
Yeah, I think it may be, you know, when people see 6%, they're like, oh wow, is that going to be like $20? Like calculating where your bill is. I think this is helpful, from 30.93 a month to 32.17 a month, right? Like, so that's a, the 1.24 a month change, right? So that's like, all right, that's a, you know.
So, yes, Vice, Vice Mayor, Council, as part of the notice of intent also, in the attachments, we do have a summary, one-page summary page of all of the different utilities and what the typical customer increase would be for percentage and dollar amount. So in that summary page, as part of the attachments, that would be a good thing for any resident if they go and look to take a look at.
That's helpful. Yeah. Councilmember, go for it.
So I, okay, so the tier one, which is the small and the typical, I know we said, you know, individuals, that we, we need to lighten the load for individuals, but an individual has more control over their water uses than anybody. Where I'm getting that is I think we've essentially burdened families, right? We, we, anybody that uses over six gallon is probably multiple people living in the house. So we've put more on them, which is, they have less control over their water uses, right? They have more people in the house, enlightened it for somebody who's living by themselves or maybe there's two people. Would you agree with that statement? I guess I don't really know. I, I think over six ga- 6K is probably how many people living in your home?
Well, I could tell you, so Councilmember, go for it. My house personally, we have family of four, pets, a pool, pretty big house, and we use 7,000 gallons a month. So we're tier one, barely into tier two, just a little bit into tier two.
Okay.
I could probably squeeze it down to 6,000 too by just making some changes to the irrigation system. So I, I think even a family has an opportunity, even a family up at 12,000 gallons, I think it's pretty simple to get down to 9,000 gallons. I think there's, there's opportunities. And then what we did today, sure, we improved, we found opportunities to improve that tier one rate, but what we did to then level that out is we spread the difference amongst all the other classifications, because there's so many, it was almost a minuscule jump to all the other classifications to really get back to that.
But you, but you are correct. We tried to make this revenue neutral. So at the direction of the council to try to keep that service charge, bring that service charge lower for those who are at 3,000 or less, and we adjusted that down. Then we had to go make up for the revenue through the other categories of residential, and that's what we've done.
And you're right, you could go, a, a family could go from 12 to nine, but you're still now in, you know, the higher tier and paying more. I just, I guess that's what I, I would say, from my perspective, a person live, I, I don't necessarily, I don't see it as more of a, as more, it's harder to pay your water bill as a single person than I do a family. So to me, putting the burden back on a larger household, I would not have, I would not have chosen to do that.
It's very much a push and pull because we have so many categories, it's, it's, where do you look?
Yeah.
It could be a challenge.
Any other questions?
And it's only on the difference? It's only on the difference? So the addition, yeah, okay.
I think that's helpful, you know, when we look, your statement of those, those regular users, about 52%, you know, having that data helps how many people we're affecting, right? As far as these tiers and how much we increase these tiers, right? So when we're talking about like 6K average, if that's 52% of the, the households out there that we're impacting, right? Like that's, that's a big impact that we're helping, I think, a, a good majority of residents.
Right, but that's where we get the most revenue too. You have, you know, it's, the idea of we're staying revenue neutral.
Sure.
You know, and so what you do, take it out of the, if we're going to try to make it more affordable, less impactful for those at 3,000 or less, then, and we're only charging the service charge. And I don't know what percentage that makes up of our total accounts, but the biggest group will be the next one.
Sure.
And, and then we try to then increase at the next tiers, we went, even got more aggressive on the rates again, recognizing they're using at least certainly a tier three and four more, and I call it discretionary water, but recreational water, outdoor water. So we were using that as a way of saying, well, if you're going to use that water, you're going to pay more of a premium for it.
But I guess that's my point, you're penalizing people that have more people in their household.
Well, I don't know that's necessarily more people.
You're not necessarily just-
I think at that point, it's, it's more landscaping.
Well, you don't, you don't know that, right? You, you-
Typically, a lot of these, we, we, I mean, if you're using over 24,000 gallons, that's a, I mean, that's twice as much as the home of, home of four kids. So, but again-
That tier probably.
It's a philosophy of the council, it has been, and the way the rates have been and way we, the reason we created these tiers, we haven't always had these tiers, we created them with that purpose of capturing what we felt were accounts that were using more discretionary, more recreational water outside of the house. So again, we can go back to the way it was, what we presented, when we presented it the first time, it was really trying to, all classes of residential tiers were pretty much treated the same, except I think when we got to the higher tiers, we didn't make that distinction. So that's kind of a council discussion, we've tried to address the concerns we heard last time. Regardless, we are still trying to balance out the overall fund, and as you can see, in three or four years, we drop below our goals, and so that means in the next two years, council staff are going to have to make some tough decisions to, we can't, we won't be able to have a 6% reserve for any one year when we're actually there. We will have to make some tough decisions, whether it's higher rate increases or having to reduce some of these capital projects, which then has consequences also. So, but for now, I mean, this was just, it's a philosophy, we can keep, treat every class the same, or we can make some accommodations at any level the council wants us to.
Councilmember Summers.
You know, I, I don't want to get too conflated, but I think we've all seen some single-family homes that are large, huge lawns, lots of strawberries, big pools. A friend of mine who's, who just two people in it, has a lazy Susan, or not a lazy Susan, what do you get, lazy river, and a lazy Susan. But that's in the kitchen. Right?
Should fire that lazy Susan.
The lazy Susan, the lazy river in the backyard, that's a lot of water.
Right.
And that, the, the question is how do we try to keep control on these costs so that the, the folks that do struggle, whether it's the family of four or six, or the, the seniors who just one or two in those houses are on fixed income, and these budget increases hit them every single year. So I guess a separate question with, when it comes to the residential, is are there financial assistance programs available if people cannot or are having difficulty paying this bill? And if so, what are some examples? It doesn't have to be exhaustive, but-
Councilmember Summers, a year or two ago, I think we introduced the low-income senior discount, and I believe that's a 30% reduction on the service charge. We've always had the many community assisted programs, I think it's Mesa CAN and one that they can certainly apply for, and that's all administered through business services.
Okay, those have been in place, we can-
Those are just some examples of things, and I think the state has some, it might be a good idea as these rates roll out, to put into the water bill in the pamphlet section, if you need help on your rates, and then list some of those contacts, particularly one contact. And so if folks are struggling even with these rates as we try to adjust them, then they know who to call. Secondly, we've also tried to shift this burden more to our commercial side of things, and I think when we see that on, on these slides, and particularly with large water users. And one of the concerns is that the rates have been going up for residential users because we've seen some very large water users come in, and some of them don't provide a whole lot of jobs. And we've, this council has made that change recently, as a matter of fact, within the last few months, to, to increase those rates, to try to shift the burden properly off the, off of residential users and those who are using a tremendous amount of water. All of these decisions though have implications, right? Some of these big water users create jobs, but, you know, we have to balance that out. The commercial customers are going to see a larger increase, but on the other hand, I'm also trying to attract quality retail development, and the water cost is, is going to be a consideration for that. So this, these are tough decisions, but we live in a desert, we have to pay for the infrastructure, it's a pretty large city geographically, 100, what are we, 130 something square mile? 100?
I'd say 140.
All right, that's, we should, we should do a, you know, some kind of a contest, guess how large we are. But 140-ish square miles, that's a lot of pipe that has to be maintained, it's a lot of fire hydrants that have to be maintained. So I, I, I think what you've done is try to get the best balance here that we can. I do appreciate you lowering the rates. I want to make sure that we are clear that there are assistance programs out there, so when we do print these bills and make this public, if we could put those out there to, to help more people, that would be great. Thank you, my colleague.
All right. Any other questions on water portion?
All right.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the energy portion of the forecast. Five-minute break, okay, perfect. Five-minute break, sorry Scott. All right, why don't we get, why don't we get started with the next item? We have Energy Resources Department, Scott, Anthony Kadoran and John Petrov. So, thank you, Scott.
Excellent, good morning. Vice Mayor, Council, Scott Boucher, I'm the Energy and Sustainability Director here at the City of Mesa, and we're here to, to chat with you about our rate proposals. So first, we'll start off with the electric utility, we're going to talk about both electric and natural gas today. So you'll see from this slide, there are increasing cost pressures on the electric utility. When you look at the operating budget, there is inflation on commodities and other services. I will say that when we talk about commodities, that's not actually the electricity or the natural gas that we're talking about, because that's, that's passed through on the bill through a commodity adjustment factor. So this is more of, you know, the price of transformers, the price of equipment, the vehicles, that's what we're seeing as far as those pressures. Also with personnel services, they've increased. Debt service also has increased with the electric utility, really looking at trying to meet the demand of downtown in the development that's happening, some multi-department projects, examples Broadway Road is one of them that we're working on, and also there's some reliability and generation projects that the department is working on. John?
So going off what Scott's saying, and you've seen this from water, this is a graph of the increasing operating costs in electric utility. Now, the orange is the prior forecast and the blue is the current forecast. So costs have gone down, we've done some budget reductions, and there's other, been other reductions shifting of personal services. But costs are still increasing on the operating side, about 300,000 for this year and then up to 500,000 through the end of the forecast.
And then this slide here is specific to some projects that the utility is involved in. First one is AMI, that we've seen an increase in the cost, that was approved by council a few months back. Also some of the developments, so this is new service that we're looking at, the Edge on Main would be the southeast corner of Country Club in Main Street. Substation improvements, that is a hardening project, so a security project at the Rogers Substation with SRP. That has been a focus of both SRP and the City of Mesa utility with some threats that we have seen across the country to utilities. So this is really a, a security project there. And then some electrical improvements with water, that we have some projects.
Yes.
I, so is the advanced metering, was that an ARPA project? No, no, it wasn't.
It's, it's-
Bonds.
What's going on?
Bonds. Bonds.
Right, oh, where, where we're getting the money from, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so here's a graphical representation of what Scott was just talking about, with the increased debt service costs in the utility. So as you can see, the, the current forecast has those costs growing through the forecast up to about one and a half million more than what was shown prior.
So just as a brief reminder, when a customer looks at their bill, it's split into two components, that being the supply cost, which as Scott mentioned, is a pass-through for us. So all the cost to generate the energy, get it to the Rogers Substation, that's pass-through directly what we pay, the customer pays. The second portion is the distribution rates, which is the cost to distribute the energy to the customer. So this graph is specific to those supply costs of generating the energy and getting it to the Rogers Substation. And prior to the 2021, 2020 market disruption that we saw in the electric markets, our customers saw a significant advantage, being a City of Mesa customer versus being an SRP customer, about $300 a year, where our supply costs were lower than SRPs. When that market disruption hit, our supply costs almost doubled, maybe even a little more. Or at least that's what the customer would have seen on their bill, is their supply costs doubling. But through council and city management, we were able to use ARPA funding to keep that bill lower than SRP and gradually increase supply costs to the customer, whereas SRP took a, a fairly large loss on that increase and is now making that up. So in this graph, the, the City of Mesa customers' costs are in orange, and if that customer were taken and put in the SRP territory, the blue represents what their cost would have been. And the hatched line is the, the ARPA dollars that we were able to lower, how much we were able to lower the customer's bill. So you can see going from 2021, 22 fiscal year through this fiscal year, you'll see a gradual increase in what the customer has actually seen in orange. And then going into this year, we're seeing about equal, so our supply cost is just about equal with SRP. We're forecasting that we might end up a little bit above them this year, but we're working as diligently as possible to stabilize those costs, bring on new resources and get those costs down. Any questions?
I guess I do have a question. So SRP's supply costs went up, you're just saying that they didn't charge, they didn't pass it through to the customer?
Yeah, Councilmember, go forth. Yes, that's accurate. They, so last we heard, they, the kind of under-collection there was in the hundreds of millions of dollars. I think they said about 18 months, they're going to be caught up on that, but yes, they were able, because they have such a large customer base, they're able to, to take a loss or under, under-collect on that and then slowly collect it worse.
So I'm confused about this graph though. I mean, this is not really the supply cost then, right? This is just the difference of-
It, it's what the, the customer would have paid. So, so yes, you're, you're correct. It's not, it's not the cost that the utility is seeing for supply, it's what a customer would have seen.
But it was, the impact of the customer though, and we stepped in and mitigated against passing on that entire cost.
So just to maybe apply some numbers to it, in, in fiscal year 21, 22, where there's the large orange line, a customer, if you take our average customer and you put them in SRP service territory, they would have paid $820 to SRP for electrical supplies. If you would have put them in our service territory at that time because the market went up so much, they would have paid $1,100. But with ARPA funding, we were able to bring that down to $620, so.
I mean, it still got paid, it's just that we didn't pass all that cost on to the resident.
And how many dollars did you use, 20?
I'm sorry, for the ARPA money?
About 20, right?
20 million.
So their margins are shrinking and, and we keep our margins pretty tight, is that what maybe this is saying? Is that what maybe this is saying?
Councilmember, go forth. Yes, we're obligated to keep a fund balance, and perhaps Brian can correct me a little bit if I'm off here, but we aim to keep within plus or minus 2% of collecting exactly what we're charged on any given fiscal year. So right now, we're targeting end of fiscal year being plus or minus 2% with what our budget is. Whereas they're able to carry balances from year to year, we're not able to do that under our current policy.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll wait till the end.
So with that, with, this is a comparison, a monthly bill comparison for our residential customers. It does include the SRP's proposed November rate increase. And with the increasing costs overall, the debt service, the operating costs and those higher supply costs, we are seeing our average customer's bills about 18.6% above SRP currently, and with the proposed increases will be about 20% above SRP. We are comparable to APS for the average use customer. And with that comparison, here are our proposed residential electric rate adjustments. We made some slight adjustments from last year, so last year you saw $2.50 for the system service charge. We're looking at a $2.75 increase to that. We've gotten rid of the summer Tier 2 and winter Tier 1 increases, and we are proposing the 39% increase to the winter Tier 2 to get moved to an inclining rate, sorry. And that only affects the large use customers, doesn't affect smaller average customers. So overall, for an average customer, we're looking at the $2.75 a month increase. Moving on to the commercial side, similar situation.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Since we're finishing the residential, it'd be nice to have a bar graph showing how many customers are in our customer utility or electric company, so that we can always track how many customers you have, other utilities do that, and then also the amount of electrical usage as well, what you anticipate, what you're using today, what you're going to use in the future, so that we can plan for future growth, I think, as a council, and we can understand it better, you know, if you have...
Have we seen much growth, though, in our consumption?
We're seeing more growth in our customers than we are in our consumption. And I think that's when you look at downtown and the way that downtown is developing, you know, it's the transit-oriented development that we're looking at, and you've got apartments that they're not using, it's, they're more efficient, they're not using as much energy as what it would be in a single-family home if you were developing that. And so what we're seeing is increases in customers, but relatively flat for the increase in our electric usage. Because the other portion is, we're not bringing in a lot of, you know, there's not data centers or those sorts of things coming into downtown.
But I think for tracking purposes, I think it'd be just good for ourselves as council that we have kind of an idea of customer usage increase as well as...
We can definitely provide that information.
Just put it in here and so we can...
Yeah. We can definitely provide that. Tony's group tracks that pretty closely, and so we can definitely provide that information.
I know you don't have a million, 50,000 customers like SRP does, but you have probably, what, 16,000, 17,000?
We're approaching 19,000.
19,000. Okay. But it'd be nice, like you do on slide 35, you could do something like over the years, you can show customer usage and how it's increasing and that. That's all I'm suggesting. Thanks.
Okay, so here's our commercial customer monthly bill comparison. And that, again, with the higher operating costs, debt service costs and the electric supply costs, monthly average use commercial customers are about 15% above SRP with the And this is our proposed commercial electric rates. So we have, from prior forecasts, we set a $2.50 increase on the service charge. We've changed that to 5% for the monthly system service charge. And then we're continuing to increase the Tier 2 summer and winter usage rate to get, move more to an inclining rate. So for the average commercial customer, that Tier 2 doesn't affect them, so their average commercial customer would see a $5 monthly bill increase.
With that, we can move over to the natural gas utility. And so similar to what we just discussed with the electric utility, commodities have gone up, the price of services, our personal services have gone up. And then with debt service, a lot of that is to meet the growth demand to the Magma service territory. Our Magma area, just to remind everybody, is outside of the city limits. It's in Queen Creek, down almost to Florence and Santan Valley, and that is a very fast-growing area down there. If you haven't driven down in that area in a while, it is definitely a lot of development that's happening. And with that, we're installing new lines and new meters for new customers that we're adding. Also, we work closely with the water department on quarter-section projects, so this would be in the older parts of Mesa, and replacing aging infrastructure. And we've also seen increases similar to what we discussed with the electric utility for the metering project, the AMI project.
So, again, here's our increasing operating costs on the gas utility. Most of these increases are due to inflationary pressures, and we've added new positions over the last few years to meet that growth in the Magma service area. And along with those positions, you have equipment, trucks, that you need to outfit your employees with. So those costs are shown here, the increasing cost.
And this is just some specific projects that kind of lay out what we've seen as far as increases on AMI, new mains and new services that I discussed in the previous slide.
So, and then this is a graphical representation of those increasing debt service costs from the prior forecast. You can see about $5 million increase over the life of the forecast. And then on the, on the gas side, our monthly residential bill comparison, we do compare favorably to Southwest Gas. Average use customers are currently about 20% below Southwest Gas, and with the proposed rate adjustments, they'll be about 17% below Southwest Gas.
I should never let you serve here. Is this, how many customers do we have, again, in the service area?
For gas? For both utilities?
For gas, yeah, for...
For the Magma and Mesa area is 77,000-ish?
Okay. So this, I think maybe the scale helps absorb some of the costs, so that we don't push up, because I see pretty certain difference from our electricity, right, to gas based on just the number of customers we have and how we can, you know, use the economy of the scale.
And it's a growing...
It's a growing...
Accounts on gas.
Yes.
Right, with what we're seeing down in Santan Valley. So, yeah, it's a very different dynamic, where electric is a fixed geographic area and there's not a tremendous amount of growth there, whereas this is just the opposite on the gas side. We have not only the residential, but mega-powered industrial users that we're working with, that are going to, are still having conversations with. But there's some major users that we're looking, working with in the area down there.
And have prices as far as transfers, that remain the same as far as where we get the gas? How's that, that market looking?
Vice Mayor Heredia, yeah. So we recently executed a 10-year deal on natural gas supplies under $3 per decade term. I mean, that's probably one of the best deals I think we've ever gotten on gas supplies. So the gas market is down. Like on electric, I think our goal is to stabilize costs. We want our customers to have a predictable, acceptable cost. We're not going to always beat the market, but as you mentioned, gas markets are favorable right now, so we're trying to keep that stability with our customers' bills, and I think we've been able to do that recently.
And just as such on the growth, what's the projected growth that we can have in this Magma area? So we're at 70, is it, are we talking about 140 or 150,000?
Well, it's not just, it is the number of accounts, but I would say, if the gases, should you have some potential users who could be, I don't know, significant? I don't know how to quantify it, but how would you quantify it as far as...
Well, there's, there's industrial users that will use, what, 2/3 of what our gas supplies are now. There are projections into the future that they could use 2/3 of what all of our 77,000 customers are using with one industrial customer. But in addition to that, when you look at the amount of land that is still undeveloped in the Santan area, there's significant increase. Tony, you want to... Yeah, I agree with that 100%. I think, yeah, we're knocking on 80,000 customers right now. I don't recall our full build-out numbers for how many are expected down there, but it's a 240-square-mile service territory. Councilmember Spillsbury, I think you estimated 140 for Mesa, so we have about 40,000 customers in Mesa. I think Magma will end up well north of 100,000 easily. Honestly, I think that's more limited perhaps by the water situation or developable land. There's, running through the center of it is the CAP Canal, so on the east side of the canal is all kind of floodways, so we'll see how that develops. The potential is huge, and like Mr. Brady and Scott mentioned, there's huge potential for large industrial customers there as well. It's full of potential.
I just have a question real quick. So, the customer base is increasing, the cost of gas is decreasing, but our net sources and uses is still negative forecast for the next five years. Is that because of the infrastructure to support all this growth?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to understand that.
Councilmember Summers?
The large commercial customers that we've been discussing that are over in the Pinal County area, they'll use a lot of gas, how's that infrastructure? That's a big infrastructure, right, that has to be put in, how are those supported by rates?
That's why we're still saying, well, part of that, those deals are about the paying, them paying their fair share of that.
Their fair share of that rate. So they're, just like the water issue, they're going to be paying into their fair share.
That's the discussion that is ongoing.
Yeah. And then that'll be generating some significant revenue, I assume, for us?
Yeah, there'll be a period of years before, I mean, because we do, we still have to put in some of our own infrastructure that wouldn't just particularly serve them, but I mean, there's a payback. There's a lot of risk by putting in all that infrastructure for one user, but on the other, on the upside, if that one user continued for, I forget what the payback period is, it's less than 10 years, then it would be a significant...
Significant revenue for, for an area that...
Yeah.
We offered to Southwest Gas in a swamp and they didn't take.
No, just the opposite.
Yeah. So in the infrastructure that is necessary for that developer, only for them, is that the way that we're working with them right now is that they're paying for that infrastructure. The infrastructure that's necessary for gas to kind of get to them, the city is taking on that responsibility, because we see we're going to need that gas in the future even without that customer, because of the growth that would happen there.
Yeah, and that's where I was getting at, because I'm, there's a lot of complexity to this agreement that's going through, and the risk, but I want to make sure that the infrastructure that's going in here isn't going to come to bite us or particularly ratepayers in the future.
We're working very hard to minimize that as much as possible with a line being drawn if it's necessary for them and only them that they're paying for that.
And right now, it's one user, but there's potential in that area of the way it's zoned to be multiple users, so are they going to buy into that too, kind of like what we do with our water lines?
Yeah, so there's a lot of undeveloped land in the northern portion of Queen Creek that is being marketed by state land, it's state land right now, being marketed for large users. And so there's, there's a lot of potential for a lot of growth in industrial in that area.
Yeah, that's something we'll have to look at, too, because I know we had a challenge along, I think it was Warner Road in the county, right now, kind of haws, where other properties, there was a developer ready to go, there were other properties that were and weren't interested in buying into this. Basically, it's a freeloaded issue. So having them buy in on that to potentially, might also help the developer, as well as economic growth out there and lead to some positive revenues for the city. So I know you have a lot of work to do on that, and so you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with those favorable rate comparisons you just saw for the average and higher use customers, we adjusted the recommended rates from the prior forecast. We're not proposing a system service charge adjustment and are adjusting Tier 2 rates at a higher percentage than Tier 1 to move from a declining rate structure to an inclining rate structure. So with, with all these increases, for an average customer, they would see a $1.12 increase to their bill per month. On the commercial side, for bill comparisons, our commercial customers also compare quite favorably to Southwest Gas across all levels of consumption. And then on the commercial side, our proposed rates, we're proposing the following adjustments, a $3 system service charge increase, 9% Tier 1 summer and winter increases, and a 25% Tier 2 adjustment for summer and winter. Now, these adjustments were made to move to an inclining rate structure, and because of that, build disparity with Southwest Gas on the commercial side. So for an average commercial customer, they would see a $26.63 increase per month on their bill, but still remain competitive with Southwest Gas.
So that's the end of our presentation. If there's any questions that you have?
I don't have a question, but again, a bar graph showing customer use and, again, projected utility usage on the gas for council.
Thanks. Going back to the electric conversation, you know, we've talked about like microgrids and, you know, having other items here in the downtown areas to stabilize some of these rising costs. Is there, what's the future of that? What's the forecast of, you know, are we moving on with microgrids and how does that help? Or the other items that we've talked about to further maybe help with the cost there in our electric utility?
So with the microgrid projects specifically, we are still working with engineering and should have some final numbers from them soon. We're also working with budget in the city manager's office on projections and what that means to our fund balance. So in other words, looking at how much is that going to save us versus what is the cost that we're going to have with the debt service? And really, we're getting very close to making a decision on whether or not that's a project that we're going to move forward.
Yeah, the feasibility is becoming a challenge because of the increasing significant costs and trying to weigh that. I mean, I think when we started, there was, like, it was optimistic, but then as we're kind of getting deeper into, just again, the cost of all things, like you're saying here, and trying to pencil that out as a feasible option, that's why we're waiting for the numbers. So we'll bring that back, but as those prices have increased, it's made the feasibility of that idea more of a challenge, right? Is because then you're taking on a burden of a tremendous amount of capital and the time it's going to take to, you know, spread that cost out over a period of time, it could have a significant impact on rates. And so we'll, we're going to get some more numbers, I think, soon, and we'll be making that evaluation.
We do, Vice Mayor Heredia, we do have a new energy resource coming online January 1st with Salt River Project, so that's, I think, the first product we've worked with them on for probably two decades now, and that's going to be a very low-cost resource for us. So that'll be coming online in a few months. And we're working on a very low-priced solar project in Pinal County that hopefully we'll be bringing to you in October. We're still working through some of the details, but you should see that coming up this next month as well. These resources all take a significant amount of time to develop, and I think we're always working on them.
These resources all take a, a significant amount of time to develop, and I think we're always working on them, so we'll, we'll definitely keep bringing them to you as they, uh, become feasible.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none?
Thank you.
Move on. Is there any other discussion?
Yep, got last remaining couple of slides, right?
Just to wrap it up.
Okay.
See how Jonathan gets the slide deck ready. Uh, just a few slides on some other adjustments, uh, to the terms and conditions that we wanted to present to council, and then we'll kind of review the forecast again and then go through some dates.
Yes, so we have, um, some adjustments to the terms and conditions and the utility service request fees, so just a couple of slides to highlight some of the more significant changes there. So for the terms and conditions, um, we have basically updates and clarifying language, um, that we've included. So within that, we want to highlight, um, we're adding, uh, for all utilities, the city's ability to trim vegetation or remove obstructions if we have to get access to a utility meter. So right now, we have that language in the electric terms and conditions, so the recommendation here is just to apply that same language to all utilities across the board. Because with AMI, we aren't necessarily going out to a meter every month, so there may be vegetation or obstructions that accumulate over time. For the utility service request fees, the first item there is, uh, to make all trip-related charges consistent, because all these charges involve staff traveling to a city meter for a service request. So right now, for a next-day turn-on, termination of service, or an unscheduled trip, right now, those charges are slightly different, but they're essentially, you know, the same staff travel time to get out to a meter. So the recommendation is to just make those a consistent twenty dollars.
Question, Councilmember Spilsbury?
On the, um, trimming vegetation, do you talk with the owner at all, or you just, this gives them right to do it?
I, they have. If we can't read the meter, then I think we're doing it at the time.
But I mean, you don't even just do like a courtesy, like, hey, I need to cut this away, or anything like that.
Probably not if the meter reader is there at the time, probably not.
And they just do it, and the meter reader's the one doing it.
Well, that's why we're there, or I guess it could be someone doing work on the, our meter, so it's trying to get access to our equipment.
I mean, what if it was like a big tree branch or something?
Well, meters are probably not going to be in the way of a big tree branch, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, not typically anyways.
It's going to be a brush, it's going to be a bush or grass or something.
So, yeah, and then you clean it up, I'm assuming, but you don't, you're not even giving a courtesy.
This is a meter, this is a gas meter or a water meter.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor, Councilmember, um, this really came to a head as we've been out touching all the, uh, meter boxes for AMI. It is something that's been an ongoing issue, but as Chris said, when we're out there monthly, we're able to keep up with it and it doesn't become an issue. But now, as we're going out, um, and we're hitting, uh, meters across the city, we are seeing, uh, that this is an issue we need to address. The, uh, it's either the meter reader or the utility field crew member that's out there doing this, or a contractor now for the AMI project. But yes, they would contact, they would go up and try and make contact with the resident before they do anything, and they will do minimal effort to access the box.
These meters are in the ground.
The, the water meters are in the ground.
So it's going to be grass, it's going to be.
Gas meters and electric meters are on the site.
It could be a large bush or something.
Exactly, and, and we're not out.
We need to move the meter, we shouldn't have.
I'm just wanting to make sure that the vegetation's taken care of well, but that also we don't get a bunch of calls from residents that are mad that their things got cut out.
But we were doing this before, right, because, you know, we had to, we just have to be able to read the meter, so it's not, I think, it's very intrusive.
It puts it in the terms and conditions, so it's stated and agreed, you know, each party knows, but yes, we're not going to go out there and maul somebody's vegetation.
Hypothetically, okay, so, and, and so you try to maybe knock on their door and let them know, but then if they're not there, you're going to just do it so you can.
Again, we're going to do the minimal that we need to, just to be able to access the utility.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, Scott?
I, I, you kind of do the same thing with the fire hydrants, I mean, I think that's in a different code, but you've cleared vegetation and left a sticker on saying, we tried to contact you. Your Choya cactus was in the way of a fire hydrant, so we, uh, we cleared it for the fire department, which, thank you for that, but, um, I think the same thing would apply as just a courtesy, hey, we had to trim your bush, a little sticker when we have to do that. My question on the utility fees with the recommended fees, how does the AMI meters impact the fee? Because we're not actually sending somebody out potentially with remote access to turn on, turn off, so what are we planning for those?
So if it is a remote, um, if it is a remote turn-on, we, we wouldn't charge a trip charge, so they wouldn't be subject to that, um, turn-on fee if it is a remote turn-on. I think gas or electric, I think there still is a component that somebody may have to go out there, and if they do, then the charge would apply, but yes.
We can't, we can't remote turn on gas because somebody has to be there for us.
Yeah, safety, it's probably a good idea, okay, so a lot of this for water, for example, would probably be moved in the future.
For move out, move in, we would be able to read that remotely, and we would not have to, uh, go out to, to the site, so there's no, there would be no trip charge.
With rare exception, all right, thank you.
On the next slide, uh, so the next recommendation is to increase the security deposit for hydrant meters, so these hydrant meters are primarily used for dust control at construction sites. Uh, so the recommended amount of twenty-five hundred dollars is, uh, to cover the cost of the meter. The fifteen hundred dollar charge was last adjusted, uh, in two thousand nine, so in the last fifteen years, we've seen those meter costs increase. So the recommendation is to just keep up with the cost of those hydrant meters. And then last, uh, recommendation includes increasing fees for unauthorized, for unauthorized use for repeat offenders. So currently unauthorized use is found system-wide about two to three times a week, and some of these occurrences are by repeat offenders. So right now, the unauthorized use fee charges the same flat amount per occurrence, so a hundred dollars per occurrence for a residential customer and a thousand dollars for commercial. So the recommendation here is to, uh, have an escalating fee structure so that, uh, for a second occurrence, a residential customer would have to pay five hundred, and then for any other following occurrence, it'd be a thousand dollars. And then for commercial, similarly, you know, first occurrence would be a thousand, and then any occurrence after that would be twenty-five hundred.
Can you explain, what is that, what do you mean, what, what is this, unauthorized use fee?
Yeah.
Stealing our utility.
How, how do you do that?
So it can be, uh, breaking the lock, when we turn a utility off, it can be breaking the lock, turning the utility back on, it can, and then it can escalate. Uh, we had an incident where an electric meter was removed to disconnect the service, so we went that extra step, and they went and used cabling to bypass and connect that, reconnect that service. Very dangerous, but it's also a theft of our service.
Okay.
Criminal charge for that too, or civil?
Um, I don't believe so. I, 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 I don't have an exact answer.
Right now, we've just been charging a hundred dollars, which apparently is not a deterrent. On the question on the hydrant meters, is that charged to the developer, or if it's put in, like, a residential, who gets charged there, or?
No, you know, yeah, if it's a, if it's a construction site, it would be charged to the, to the company that is working that site for the dust control.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, while you're just, all right, so the revised, uh, utility fund forecast kind of briefly went over this earlier, so I won't spend too much time on it. As we see, this is, so this includes, this forecast includes all of the, uh, recommended and revised rate adjustments that we just presented last week and this week. So on the next page really is the revised rate adjustment forecast, which I wanted to spend a little time on as, as mentioned before. The net sources and uses were still, uh, negative around twenty million dollars for the next couple of years. However, with these rate adjustments, that negative net sources and uses starts becoming a little bit better, and then by year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we start seeing a positive net sources and uses, which helps, will then help build that fund balance back up. As you notice, in fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we're below that eight percent, which, uh, is financial policy. However, this gives us a couple of years to, uh, adjust for it, and, uh, and then, and the outer year, we're at eight point nine percent. So we're right there within our financial policy, uh, as rec- as, uh, mentioned before, our financial principle is a little higher than that, but at least we're in that, in the final year, we're in with our financial policy.
Councilmember Go-Forth?
So how are we getting back, how are we, how are we doing that? Is it because our capital projects have maybe ended? You know, are we lowering our costs?
What's coming back up?
Our reserve back up, like, what is it that we're doing in those?
It's a combination of both Vice Mayor, uh, Councilmember Go-Forth, it's a combination of the outer years is when the debt service starts coming on for the big three projects, but that starts stabilizing some of our expenses. But then also we see the growth in, uh, some of the, in the accounts of gas, water, electric, we start seeing that growth in the revenue. So the revenue that we receive today or the adjustments that we make today start compounding over the years, so that helps that revenue growth also. So it's a combination of looking at our expenses, seeing some of those reduce, so I know, uh, water, uh, resources have seen some costs go down on some of their chemicals and things like that, so that kind of helps out for the forecast. But then also that revenue of the growth growing will help out with the accounts, so that's kind of a combination of both.
The other question, uh, as far as, you know, we, we saw a rate cut in the market yesterday, how, about your, your experience, about how long does that take to see any effects? Is that six months, a year, or two years, uh, and, and how does that impact, um, kind of these, these, uh, these costs or revenue that we, we see in your experience, right? I know there is a lot of other factors and variables at play, but.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, that, thank you for the question, uh, and I, if, um, Mike Kennington, the CFO, can, can help me out with a little bit of this, probably a little bit better. However, with, with the issuance of debt, that's where it really affects us, is the issuance of debt for, uh, these projects. So we go out once a year, so we'll probably start seeing the effect if this half a percent, we might see it when we start issuing, uh, debt next year, we usually try to do in the springtime. However, with the, with the Fed, uh, lowering the interest rate, it all depends on how far they lower the interest rate, so if they keep lowering it, yes, we will get a better rate. However, on the other side of that too, is our forecast and the rating agencies. So our forecast is, uh, they review it a lot and take a look at that, and so if our red, credit rating agency is good, we'll get a lower, uh, a lower interest rate with a combination of that, uh, the rate dropping. So with the half a percent that the Fed did yesterday, we'll probably see it in the future, but I'm not sure, I really couldn't tell you like how far in the future we'd see that.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember Duff?
Quick question regarding that, so as far as our bond rating and, and our rates that we pay according to our, our rating, isn't like the twenty percent reserve balance the, I, kind of a, a really strong position to be in to get optimal rating for that best rate?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, uh, that is, you are correct on that, to where we, that's why we came up with our financial principles of about a, oh, fifteen to twenty percent or higher than twenty percent because of the rating agencies taking a look, they look at a favorable, uh, fund balance, the higher fund balance you have, you can get a little too high, but if they look at the fund balance, and if you have a good fund balance, they will take a look at that, because then it's the stability of the utility itself and being able to fluctuate with any, uh, unforeseen expenses or events, to where they'll be able to, um, take a look at that and you'd still be able to pay that debt service and be able to, um, manage your expenses.
Just as a sensitivity, right, that we made the decision we're going to maintain twenty percent, well, our rates would be increased, proposals would be significantly higher. So we're trying to balance that out, and even in this proposal, you know, we're going to be, you see the proposed rates out into the future, but even right now, uh, that's not enough to mitigate against these, you know, when we're below our principles of eight percent. So we'll just have to keep assessing that, a lot of things change, you know, there's interest rates, the cost of capital, the cost of, um, lots of commodities and equipment, so we'll watch that. We'll have to maybe make some changes on our operations, but that's really hard, because this is so intensive on the capital side and the infrastructure side. I think the thing that we'll have to sell to the rating agencies is what we've been talking here, is that we're going to go through a period of significant investment in our infrastructure, which I think is always a good thing. But that's going to be costly for a period of time, but our plan is that once we've made some of those big investments, you can see we'll be coming out of that at a net positive. So while these are, we've got to sell the value of all these improvements we're making, and why that in the long term for our, for our utility will pay back, uh, for many, many years to come, because we will have more water supply, we'll have more capacity to treat our wastewater, we'll have, we're have, we have a growing area in, in the gas utility. So we've got to talk about, this is our time to invest in the utility, and, uh, we'll be better off in the outer years. But yeah, it, it'll be a question.
So with that, on the next slide, is kind of just a brief schedule. Uh, so coming up on Monday, uh, council will consider adopting the notice of intent, so just to remind council that this sets the maximum adjustment, uh, amount for, uh, the utility rate adjustments. And so this is a sixty-day notice, so with this, uh, it'll give notice to the, to the public for sixty days. And then we'll come back on November eighteenth to introduce, uh, the utility rate ordinances, and then on December second, it'll be, uh, consideration for city council to take action on the utility rate adjustments with an effective date of February one of next year. And with that, that is the end of our utility rate discussion.
All right, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, uh, we'll move forward then, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Item, uh, item number three is to acknowledge receipt of minutes, um, motion by Councilmember Spilsbury, second by Councilmember Duff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, um, item number four, uh, list of current events and conferences attended, Councilmembers, uh, Councilmember Spilsbury.
Yeah, on Thursday, last Thursday, um, a lot of the council, the mayor, and several of our amazing staff members were able to go to Paz de Cristo and volunteer with, um, the family of Bader Singsody. It's the anniversary of his death, and, um, that was really neat to be able to be there and serve together, and I really enjoyed that. Um, on Tuesday, most of us were also at the, um, Mesa Police Department Awards and Promotions Ceremony, um, their class of, um, which, which class was it, two thousand and three? I feel like it was.
It was their twenty year.
It was their twenty year, but I feel like it was.
Two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four, but I guess it would have to be, two thousand and four's class was celebrated, um, as well as many promotions and awards, so that was great to be a part of. Yesterday, I went to a ribbon cutting at Unhooked Recovery, it's near Romanian Wrecker, it's a family-owned business that, um, does alcohol and substance abuse treatment programs, and this is their second location in Mesa, and they do really great work there. I'm glad that they're in our community, helping, um, those who need help.
All right. Anybody else? Councilmember Duff?
Few things, um, last week, uh, I know Councilmember Go-Forth, and maybe I miss some of you, were at the Mesa Art Center Contemporary Arts Museum, uh, opening reception. And, um, there's a fabulous, of course, um, art, and so please go see it, it's free. And see, on Saturday, most of us were at the El Grito, uh, celebration at Pioneer Park, and so that is a Mexican, celebrating Mexicans' Independence Day. And it's not Cinco de Mayo, that's another thing, so we had it, it was well-attended, um, the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce had then, vendors' little booths and all these fun things and information out in the park. And, um, uh, the Councilor General of Mexico, Jorge Mendoza, anyway, I don't remember his name, was there to help us, and there's performances as well. It was well-attended and, um, a great, a great event, thank you for everybody who attended, as well as East Valley Chamber of Commerce for putting together this important celebration. Then, oh, I went to Cafe, Cafe Con Plesia, I don't know how many was my Spanish pronunciation, at Los Altos Ranch Market, and that was with Fiesta PD. Who goes into the grocery store and just talks with people as they're shopping and about their questions, things like that, uh, whatever they're interested in and creating the relationship with the police, um, officers. And so it's like commonplace just to have that, and some of them have these regulars that come, and it's a great way to. way to interact with the public. And, I don't know, I think that's, oh, last night, last night, we had a micro-mobility and parking public meeting with a consultant, looking at the square mile at downtown, and looking at micro-mobility, which is, includes walking and pedestrian and scooters and everything. How do we navigate within our downtown as we're growing? So we do that gracefully and effectively, and also looking at our parking situation, which they're continuing to work on right now, and we'll be making some advisements so that we're really handling our growth and making it a wonderful experience being downtown. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Councilmember Go-Forth?
Well, in addition to all the things, I think I was at all of those things, we also, I, the mayor and I were, got the opportunity to speak at Sousa Elementary to five, six, seven, and eight-year-olds and explain to them what our role was. So that was amazing and very hard to do to those little kids. But anyway, it was great, it was great to be out there at Sousa. They have a wonderful school, so that was fun.
All right, Councilmember Freeman?
Yeah, thank you. I was able to speak to the new mayor's youth committee yesterday, the Public Safety Training Facility, and welcome them to learn about Mesa. So there, I think, 46, 43 is twice as large, so mayor and his staff have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll continue on item number five with Mr. Brady and schedule future events.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a reminder, of course, we have our council meeting on Monday, the 23rd at 5:15. Then we will have a study session on Thursday, the September 26th. That will be our joint meeting with the Mesa Public Schools Board. That will be, though, at the Post, so next week, meet at the Post. We'll have that meeting. And I forgot to mention to council, on the agenda for Monday, we will, and you'll have those this afternoon, the contract for the charter officials that you discuss in executive session. Those will be available for your review, and they'll be on the Monday agenda also. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Well, is there a motion to adjourn? Scott and Councilmember Freeman, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.